Well, let's go ahead and get started. I'll call to order the Iowa City Economic Development Committee Meeting of July 13th, 2020. All of our committee members are here, myself, Susan Nims, John Thomas, and Mazza here, Salee. We've got Wendy Ford, our Economic Development Staff person. And maybe if we can have the rest, I see Eleanor Dilks, our city attorney, Jeff Ruin, city manager, Sarah Hectone, city attorney's office, Ashley Monroe from the city manager's office. Rachel is our newest one. Is that right, Jeff? Okay. Rachel from the city manager's office. And if I could have the rest of you maybe introduce yourself, assuming you're all with Tailwinds in some way, shape or form. But if you could introduce yourselves, that would be great.
Yes, absolutely. Michael Sather, CFO and Principal of Tailwind. We also have Brandon Smith, our VP of Operations with us. And then Josh Sherburne, VP of Asset Management, both of them been working together with us. And I think you all know Kevin and Andrew with Newman-Monson.
Great. Thank you very much. Welcome, everybody. And again, I appreciate your being here today. We're looking forward to getting an update. Next on our agenda, before we get to that, is to consider approval of our minutes for the Economic Development Committee Meeting of January 27th, 2020. Can I get a motion?
I'll second.
Okay, move by Mazza here, second by John. All those members say aye.
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 Aye. opposed, passes three zero. Thank you. All right, item number three, discuss the Tailwind's proposal for historic preservation and redevelopment project on south side of 100 block of East College Street. I will turn it over to you, Wendy Ford.
Okay, great. Well, as you may recall, we've been hearing about Tailwind's project there on that block of College Street in the Ped Mall for a little over a year now. I think it was last August that they first came to the Economic Development Committee, which comprised of a couple of other members at the time, along with Susan. They came to us with a $65 million project and for which they were planning on requesting $9 million in tax increment financing to support it. Next steps after that presentation were to have them refine the concept and to submit information supporting the project costs and the projected financials to determine a financial gap for it. And over the ensuing months, they did submit that information. But enough had changed from the initial concept and the bottom line in particular, the financials were enough different that staff thought it would be good to invite them back and have them talk specifically about what was behind those numbers. Because as you noticed, or as you heard, I had said a year ago, the project was $65 million with a $9 million TIF ask, and that has changed now to $61 million project with a $13.5 million ask. So there are a lot, as you imagine, as you can imagine in this project, a lot of variables. And these folks here will tell us about what is driving those bottom line numbers for us. So they've got a presentation, and I need to designate whoever's going to be operating or sharing their screen as a co-host. So is that going to be you, Josh, or is that Michael?
I think Brandon's going to present on our behalf.
Brandon, okay. So I am supposed to go over your name. Give me just a second here. And make co-host. Yes. Now, Brandon, you should be able to share the screen at this point.
Okay, second. Everyone can see that, okay? And is my audio okay for everyone?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Well, thank you. Thank you again to everyone. Reintroducing, my name's Brandon Smith. I'm the Vice President of Operations and Development for Tailwind. Working on this project pretty well for the last year. I know other members of our team have been at it for longer than that. So we thought it important just to give you guys an update on where we've come in the last 11 months, some of the changes to the project, you know, as we've dug in further, done real analysis on the project and the financials on where it sits today. So I'll go through. Please jot down any questions, or if anything I say needs clarification, we'll try to cover everything at the end. We have Josh and Michael, who are a lot more on the financial side than myself as well. If there's specifics that you want to talk about there, I'll try to go through it quick. So there's plenty of time for questions at the end. So just for an overview, I know you're all pretty familiar with the project and where it's located. But just in case, you know, just a quick overview, you know, we're talking about the the block on College Street in the Ped Mall, kind of a full redevelopment of that block. And so the commercial side existing is broken down into kind of the three blocks, the Dooley Block, the Crescent Block, and the College Block. And then those are double lots, so they go all the way to the back of that lot. So what our project proposes is, you know, keeping all of the commercial storefronts the same on the Ped Mall, but you would be cutting off the back half of the old Sears &amp; Roebuck Building and of the Crescent Block as well. And that's where our new residential project would go, kind of tucked right behind. So that, nothing there has changed since our original proposal, but it's just kind of a refresher. So you can picture in your mind where we're talking about what buildings are being affected and so on. If you look at the proposal on the lower right, you know, that's where we're working towards right now with commercial tenants of how it looks to break down restaurant, bar, retail, current boutique clothing store that is existing will stay in that space. Another bar or retail, and then the Martinis Building, which will also stay in that space. So just kind of a look at the use of each building, which we can talk more about later. And then you can kind of see the shared entry to our new building that sits behind, kind of right next to the Graduate Hotel there. So I think Wendy touched on it, you know, the main consideration for today is the decrease in the total cost of our project with an increase in the TIF request, which, you know, probably raises some eyebrows right away to say, okay, what's changed? Why is this different? So I'll do my best to outline, you know, where those changes came from and why, you know, just as we've really dug deeper into the project. So just to reiterate what Wendy said, from the original, it was a $65 million cost with a $9 million TIF request. And, you know, what our goals were, fulfill the master plan vision with local historic landmark status on those College Street buildings. Reactivate the Ped Mall with new and vibrant small businesses to get, you know, more than just college students walking those, that street every day. The exceptional public benefit came from, you know, the main focus was a nonprofit arts organization on the third floor of the Crescent Building. And also the lead platinum aspect of the building for the environmental and sustainability. And also to, you know, reuse and keep the historic nature of the fronts of the original buildings. So that was kind of all in our original proposal. What you'll see today is a lot of those items have been achieved or are well on the way. We haven't really changed anything. In April, we got Iowa City Historic Preservation Commission to approve landmark status on all those Ped Mall facing buildings. In reactivating the Ped Mall, we're in talks with commercial tenants to occupy, I think we have every space we're in negotiation with minus 1,500 square feet in the Union Building. Every other space is already accounted for by a tenant that we're working with. The nonprofit is something that's changed a lot in a good direction. We've been engaged in talking with Riverside Theater over the last six months. They're really excited about the project. They've actually expanded their space. Originally, it was just using the third floor. Now they're, we're working with them to occupy almost 90% of the second floor and have a ground level, you know, ticket office slash kind of facade to show us a nice entrance to their space. So that's actually been kind of elevated since the first request. We've enhanced that space for Riverside Theater. The building height, nothing has changed on that since the original back in August. It still sits at the same height. Lead Platinum is something that we were committed to last summer. We've remained committed to just diving into the costs. You know, it's, last summer was more of an exercise and working off of a a projection and a bid that we had from a local contractor who had done similar projects. And what we found out in doing the exercise with Newman-Monson and our, and our current contractor was we were, we were just pretty light on that number. It's ended up being significantly more costly than originally anticipated. However, we are still, you know, committed and really want that to be part of the project. So that's part of the reason for your increased request. And then reusing the existing buildings, as I mentioned, you know, the front, the storefronts and facades on all those buildings will be preserved and won't be touched. So the historic look of that downtown can remain the same. So more specifically on what's driving the enhanced TIF request. As I mentioned, you know, early last summer, we were working on a lot of projections. And since then, we've really, we've done real underwriting, you know, with our bank and with some consultants on revenue projections. And we've gotten a lot more into actual construction costs. You know, we've done pretty, all of our environmental studies are done. We've done Phase One, Phase Two, Geotech, asbestos. And, you know, all those things just bring about costs that weren't originally budgeted. So that's driven up our costs quite a bit. The main reason that the total project cost was able to actually go down even based on those additions is we did move, last August, we were proposing a concrete frame building all the way up to the 11 stories. The significant cost differences, we've moved to a light gauge steel, which structurally is just as effective, it's just a lot cheaper material. So we were able to cut almost $10 million off of the construction costs. And then backing in to that extra five or six million to bring us to the 61 today are some of those factors, like the lead platinum, the additional costs, the additional cost of Riverside Theater, giving them more of that commercial space in the Crescent Building. And really, it's part of the TIF gap as well is lower revenue than we had originally projected. So, you know, just really quick and easy with Riverside Theater, we had originally budgeted and anticipated them using about 6,000 square feet of commercial space. Their new proposal or their new build out is just under 10,000 square feet. So it's, you know, not quite doubled, but close to double their amount. And, you know, as a nonprofit, they're paying, you know, a significantly lighter rent, you know, than a typical commercial tenant would. It's about a $20,000 a month swing in rent that Riverside will be paying versus what a normal tenant would have been in that space. So that changed our revenue, you know, quite a bit. You know, a lot of revenue things with, you know, COVID-19, we're all aware of the commercial landscape right now, just being a concern in general. So just being a little more conservative on some of those numbers. And then, and like I mentioned, just some of the other added expenses with, you know, we've done a lot of due diligence on the site. I mentioned doing ESA Phase One and Phase Two, did asbestos testing in all the buildings, did some soil borings where the new tower go. And all of those tests, you know, cost money, but also, you know, usually find things that require you to spend more money during the build. So those are the main kind of components of how did we get to a 13 and a half million dollar ask versus a 9 million? And how did the cost go from 65 to 61? So in looking at that 13 and a half, so, you know, we tried to kind of allocate, what is this going for? You know, when you're getting TIF financing, it needs to provide exceptional public benefit. So the main points that we wanted to hit on were, one, lead platinum. You know, it's, it's, it's the highest standard you get with lead for energy, you know, and efficiency. So this project will include, you know, solar panels. This is all from a lead workshop we ran, up to a 30% reduction in energy from other comparable buildings, up to a 50% reduction in water usage compared to typical buildings. We're working in a rainwater management system that will improve the water quality drainage into the stormwater for the city. The roof is going to be green with solar panels, or solar panels, excuse me. And then at our entrance, there'll be kind of a garden and planters. Other items, try to lower emissions, you know, focusing on a lot of adequate bike racks in the parking and for the building, for the residents in the new building, electric car charging stations, designated green vehicle parking stalls, et cetera. So just really using all the most sustainable, you know, products. When you're at platinum, the standards are so high. You know, the HVAC being all ductless, all outside air circulation, which is kind of another big talking point now with COVID-19, you know, clean air and circulation for resident safety and things like that. And it just, it's very expensive, but you know, you get the buyback over the, over the life of the project and the community really gets the exceptional benefit of the, of the energy efficiency. I know that as a council, you had declared earlier in the year, you know, Iowa City to be in a climate crisis. And, you know, we really think a lead platinum building is really doing its part in helping to combat that. The next, the next point, which I have touched on, Riverside Theater is something we're really excited about. We've been working with them a lot, and we've actually engaged them to the point, we have a letter of intent that's waiting to be signed. Adam Knight, their, I think, director, he said they're all comfortable with it. He just needs to get the board together, which has been difficult lately. But we have basically agreed to all terms. We're kind of just in a legal review of that letter of intent. So I mentioned they're going to be occupying the entire third floor of the Crescent Building, which is currently vacant. The entire second floor, minus one little storage area, which is currently vacant. And then where the revival store, where there's that curved glass facade, that's going to become like their ticket booth and kind of their kiosk where patrons will enter the building. So we're really excited about that. They've, they've gone as far, they have a design. They've been working with Newman-Monson as well. They have a design for the theater space, the green rooms, the changing rooms, the concessions and everything like that. So, you know, they're, they're increasing their space a lot. They kind of outgrown their old space. So we're really excited to work with them. They've been a good partner and we're looking forward to moving that forward. The historic preservation was another big aspect, which I had mentioned. We, the Iowa City Historic Preservation Commission had met in April. I believe three of the, three of the buildings had, were voted through without, without any problems to get that landmark status, to ensure that historical feel of those buildings remains intact throughout the project and well beyond the project being finished. And then lastly, just with the project in general, you know, the affordable housing aspect. Tailwind is committed to providing, you know, the number of affordable housing units that are needed for, for a project this size. This is something we do want to discuss, you know, with the council. We've, we've kind of looked at every opportunity, whether these, all these units being in our new building. We do have an off-site location where some could be housed. Or there is, you know, the option where you can buy out some of those units. And we've looked at a combination of one at all or a combination of each. So when the presentation's over, I will, you know, kind of ask for some guidance and direction from the council on if you guys have a preference or, you know, what you think works best for the project. We have, you know, we are looking to do, you know, what's best for the project. So that's something that we, we haven't finalized our answer on how we want to handle yet, but we're looking forward to. And then just reigniting some of that dark and vacant space. I mentioned, you know, where Riverside Theater's going. Ever since I've been coming to Iowa City, those, those buildings have been vacant. I don't know when the last actual occupants of there was, but, you know, we'd be really excited to reignite some of that space. So that's just some of the components of what's going into the TIF. And just a quick timeline, and this is just kind of layout when we started and where we sit today, you know, just for everyone. So we've been at this for a while, like I mentioned. The first building was purchased in October 17. Through that time, we've been purchasing the remaining parcels. I believe the last one actually closes tomorrow, and then we'll have purchased all the buildings on that block. Last year at about this time, we presented our first, you know, run at the project. In April, as I mentioned, Historic Preservation met on the buildings. Now we're here today, kind of giving the revised project. And just how it forecasts out for the remainder of the year, if this is to become a successful project. You know, I know timelines are always tight, especially now where everyone's occupied with a lot of other things. But, you know, we're hoping to get financial analysis reviewed and approved by the city's, you know, third-party consultant that reviews the TIF application and determines whether it's viable or not. And then, you know, start engaging and working on a development agreement with the city and hopefully have that TIF finalized sometime in the middle to the end of September, which is our hope that we could, you know, work with the city in getting building plans and other things like that. Sometime in October, to the end of October, that we could actually be breaking ground and working this fall. If that's possible, then we believe we can deliver the project on time. That's kind of the timeline that our banker and our bank and our investors are hoping for. And, and all the commercial tenants that we are engaged with, you know, they are.
Hey, Brandon, can you restart your, restart your speaker again? It just kind of blew up like it did this morning.
Am I good now?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Where did, where did I lose you? Sorry about that.
Just a couple of sentences, probably, not a whole lot.
Okay. Yeah, just kind of in wrapping up, you know, we're excited for the project. I think you'll see a lot of a local feel to the project. All the commercial tenants we're working with are local business owners, local entrepreneurs. Riverside Theater being a staple in Iowa City for a long time. You know, current tenants that are wanting to stay in the space. Local bank, local architect, local contractor. So we're really trying to reinvest back into Iowa City. You know, we have a bank that's excited about the project, which, you know, to be frank, in today's economic climate, it's, there's a lot of banks that aren't excited about, you know, lending large amounts of money for projects that are uncertain. So to have their full support, you know, is, we feel like we have a lot of good momentum with them that we want to keep moving. And same with investors, you know, a lot of local investors that are excited for a project that kind of maintains the old aesthetic and feeling of downtown Iowa City while increasing, you know, some of that foot traffic on the Ped Mall to a newer demographic with, you know, people that would go to Riverside Theater or maybe not those that would be walking the Ped Mall, you know, normally on a, on a weeknight or things like that. So that's kind of where we stand today. I think that is it. I will let Michael or Josh, if they want to chime in anything additional, you know, speaking financially or anything else, or Kevin, if I butchered anything on the, on the design or the lead, you know, a million times more than I do, so I would invite you to step in there. Otherwise, that was just our brief presentation. I hope to answer any questions and discuss anything that you guys have.
Thank you, Brandon. Are any of the rest of you that would like to chime in from associated with Tailwinds?
I think Brandon covered it pretty well from our, our side. Thank you again for your time and getting this revisited again. And we, we look forward to answering any questions that may have come up.
Well, thank you very much. I need to start with one thing that I just became aware of when Brandon shared his screen and your title page. And that is, I may have a conflict of interest. I need to discuss this with the city attorney. My husband just recently was selected as Chair of the Board for Green Steak Credit Union. It is an unpaid position, but still there could be a perception and I would need to have further discussion with the city attorney on my capacity to, certainly to contribute at council level. Today, we are only in an advisory capacity as the Economic Development Committee. But having said that, I guess I would like to not address the issue any further in terms of my views of the project and open this up to our two other committee members for their comments.
One question I had would be the duration of the TIF. Do you have a, do you have a sense of how long the payback would be or the rebate would be in effect?
I believe, Jeff, correct me, maybe your memory is better than mine. We figured this out a few weeks ago. I think it was between 17 and 20 years without pulling the spreadsheet. Does that sound right to you?
Yeah. You know, until we get through the, the analysis, because we still haven't gone through the pro forma, we're, we're just accepting their financials as they are right now for the sake of this presentation. When we get through those and make any adjustments that we feel are necessary, we'll have a more precise answer for that question, Counselor Thomas. But given the value of this, of this project and the, the TIF request, you're probably looking at that 17 to 20 year range. So it'd be one of the longer TIF payback periods that we've seen in a while.
Well, I'll make, I'll just make some general comments. You know, the project is, is advancing. I think it's, it was a good project. I think it's arguably a better project now and that we know somewhat better what, what actually is being proposed. And it's, it is certainly, you know, good news about Riverside. I think that that will add something both to the project and to the downtown. So I think that's, you know, really good news and that that's becoming a more substantiated piece of the project. But it does have a number of, you know, what we would call public benefits that have been there since the beginning. It's also interesting that, you know, based on, on the presentation, that more than half of the TIF would go toward the, the platinum status. So and I don't know what, what the cost, what's the next level down, gold status? You know, what that would cost, but maybe that's something that could be, I know, I know we're all interested in achieving the highest level, but at the same time, it does provide us with a little bit of flexibility in terms of financing the project if, if that's necessary. But yeah, it's, you know, other aspects of the project that I'm pleased to hear is how local it will be. We have some local investors. The tenants are local. All of that's, all of that's good news as well. In terms of the affordable housing, I think that's certainly something probably require further discussion, but one, one thought I'm having on that is if it were to go offsite, I would, I'm inclined to support and explore how we can find opportunities for that in the, in close neighborhoods so that it would still serve the, the need for affordable housing in the, what I would call that, I do tend, I personally think of the, the enclosed neighborhoods as in effect, part of the downtown. If you're, if you live in the enclosed neighborhoods, your orientation is toward the downtown. So we, if we were to go offsite, it would, it would retain that kind of downtown focus if we were to consider housing in the enclosed neighborhoods. So I think those are some of the highlights for me in terms of where we, where we are now. And, you know, it's, my, my personal philosophy is if I like the project, you know, it really truly seems to identify a number of public benefits as this one has, I would support it. And then, as I mentioned, you know, that's so much of the TIF. And then, as I mentioned, you know, that's so much of the TIF is going toward the, what we're asking for, which is a higher. Environmental lead status, so, so that's also, I think, further justification of the TIF.
Yeah, thanks for the comments. Done a brief study and Kevin, you can chime in here too. We have done a study on kind of what the delta is between gold and platinum. I think it was very basic. We didn't dive too deep. Kevin, do you remember what the monetary difference was?
We've based all of our original estimates off of lead silver. It's kind of the base, so the big jump was to platinum. This, by the way, would be the first platinum multi-family housing project in the state of Iowa. There are no other lead platinum projects for multi-family housing. So it's, it's a first. We may, we'd have to go through a, a more deep analysis because we really took off the table. The idea would be. The gold would be acceptable to the city. So we could probably say maybe a million and a half to two million would be my ballpark estimation. But we didn't take that too far because we didn't think. We thought platinum, especially now that we are a city. That has a very strong climate action process going on right now. And we supported that and we supported the goals of the Climate Action Plan that we have recently adopted.
Okay, I can time in here. As, you know. Counselor Thomas said that there is many good elements about this project. And I would really love to know exactly what's the plan for the affordable housing going to be? And you just select some combinations, some offside, and I, I just need to know like the clear brand for that. But when I, I just still have hard time. Like figuring out why now you're asking for thirteen thousand. Yes, you said some like. All this benefit, like public benefit. I think it was there before you asked for the. And a certain sound, when you ask for the nine also, this public benefit where they are from the beginning. And that my understanding, yes, correct me if I'm wrong. But also for me, I really would like to wait the. Five million more comparing to the, it's four or five. The four million more that comparing, you know, what we're getting, we're getting as a public benefit and what we're giving. Like, is this, I need to weigh that and see if this really is something that we can, like, benefit for the public and for us. I, I really just believe this is, this is like huge change. And from nine to thirteen is a lot of money. And I, I, I read to rethink this like in many, many ways. Before I can come up with my decision.
Sure, yeah.
I may weigh in real quick, just to help on the affordable housing discussion, because I, I think in addition to the developer getting some guidance, I think staff would, would benefit from that as well. The TIF policies that, that the council adopted in late twenty seventeen. Require a minimum of fifteen percent affordable housing. And that's to tenants at or below sixty percent of the area meeting income. It does allow for offsite accommodations or a fee in lieu of that could be negotiated. And the, the one project example that we have that fell into, to this. That, that came after these changes were made was Augusta Place, which is right here outside of City Hall. In that case, we did a combination of offsite and onsite housing. But as counsel knows, because of the. The affordable housing ordinance that we have for riverfront crossings. We've also been through a number of conversations on projects about whether to do fee in lieu of onsite or offsite. Or I'm sorry, fee in lieu of versus onsite, so I think in my conversations with the development team. I think they have flexibility in, in, in how they approach that topic. One thing I'll point out with the Augusta Place is when we, when we do look offsite for opportunities. We, we typically look for deeper levels of affordability or longer affordability periods. So as you move from that new construction to something that's already been built. What staff does is we look at the current market rates, market rents in those areas. And then we'll look to drive those down even further, so you can get some deeper levels of affordability offsite. But again, we recognize the intent of the, of, of the. Economic development policies is in part to make sure that there are affordable units in our newest developments as well, so. It would be really helpful if. If you could give us a little bit of direction on your thought. I know you don't have the complete information, but. For instance, on the, on the twelve East Court, it was made pretty clear from council that fee in lieu of was the preferred option there. If you do have strong feelings. About one or more of those three options, it'd be helpful to hear that. Otherwise, we'll do our best as, as staff to work with the developers to come up with a plan that we think. Serves the community well and keeps the cost down.
I guess I would have a, a question maybe for Eleanor in terms of my level of participation today. Because some of these issues that staff is, staff and developers are looking for more guidance on. Will ultimately depend on the entire council of seven people. We, we don't technically have a resolution on today's agenda, so I guess part of my question is to Wendy, are you expecting? A vote today by the committee in terms of either moving this forward, recommending this to council or not recommending this to council? But I guess how formal are we being with this today, I guess, is part of my question.
That's a good question. I had assumed that we were just going to discuss it and assumed also that there'd be some things we still need to resolve. Before we got the official nod from EDC to go forward.
Yeah, we typically, we, we would typically bring you the. The entire TIF package before it goes to council, so after we go through the financial analysis where we would give you. Very specific details on what that would be. You essentially review the, the economic development agreement before it goes to council, so this is more just recognition that the project has changed in the last year. In terms of what was projected as costs and subsidy needed. So I think, I think a general consensus or points of concern, points of support would be very helpful, but I don't think we need a vote today.
Okay, well, I, I'll go ahead and weigh in and as I say, I, I was totally unaware until I got into the meeting and saw the, the front cover. And I'll have more discussion with Eleanor as to whether or not, if this moves forward, whether or not I have. The ability to vote, I'll, I, just for today's discussion, I will give you a little bit of my input. I was surprised, I mean, I knew ahead of the meeting that the TIF request had gone up significantly. The, the explanation has certainly helped. I, one of the things I would be interested in is looking at what are the real differences between the platinum and the gold certification? What, what does that really mean in terms of the features of the building? If that's one and a half to two million? I mean, that could be almost half of the increase in the TIF request right there. So I'd be interested in, in understanding that difference. From my perspective on the affordable housing. I think I would like to see a mixture of onsite, potentially offsite and potentially fee in lieu of. The, the ability to maybe get deeper levels of affordability and longer periods. Offsite, I think is very beneficial, but at the same time, I don't think we should exclude. All people in need from our new construction, so, and I don't know exactly what that combination should look like. I think I quickly crunched numbers earlier. At fifteen percent, if the original proposal was a hundred and seventy units, that's about twenty-five. Affordable units, so I would be interested in seeing some combination of those. I'm very excited about Riverside and the expanded space that this will allow for them. So I'll just leave that my comments at that.
Well, I'll, I'll add a little bit now that Jeff's kind of expanded on the affordable housing component. I think it's hard for me to say without actually seeing what. What the differences are in real numbers, which approach I would be inclined to support. I mean, we, we do know that there would be a higher level of affordability. With the offsite. And, and then the other component would be the, the longevity of it, which I think is a critical piece too. And then I would add that. You know, my mention and mentioning the, the enclosed neighborhoods, there, I, I suspect there would be a cost benefit. With respect to the parking costs as well. Which can I think be much more easily accommodated in the, in the enclosed neighborhoods than on, in, in the ped mall itself. So, yeah, I, nevertheless, I think until we have some really. Clear numbers of what the differences are, it's hard for me to say. What would be the most sensible thing to do?
And if we were to look at the offsite option, or I'm sorry, if, if council was interested in, in looking at. Other housing options in and around the downtown, that's probably going to be a fee in lieu of, because the, the offsite is going to require. What we'd look at was offsite is what are the other property holdings that the ownership group has? And that would be in this, in this particular instance, limited to the quarters development, so we would look at that development and. See how we can drive down rents there for an extended period of time at a certain number of units, but if you wanted to go to. Areas of town where the developer does not have holdings, that's when we would do a fee in lieu of. And then the city would look to either partner with a nonprofit housing provider. Or, or purchase or invest in market rate housing ourselves in order to achieve affordability in those areas.
Yes, but even we don't know how many, how many, I don't know about many is that, how much is, we, you know, there is many things that I really don't know about. So and also, you know, I, I understand that we are now talking about, we need some affordable housing in downtown. That's one of the goal now about like bluff life matter goals, and also we have, we talked about. We need to change our, we know the affordable housing plan and come up with something good because forty, ten years is not. Kind of affordable, all those kind of things, things who are really thinking about changing those. Why we don't start with this even before we change it? Why we don't start with what we really need? I, I would love to know exactly what, what the details. Before I can say anything.
Okay, well, I think that the hope was today that we would get a, a better sense for which options are preferred, so that we can, we can. Nail down those details, incorporate them into the financial review and then present them back to council. Again, staff is, is always prepared to, to work with the developers to put our, our best. Foot forward in terms of where we think council will be on that, and that's, that's certainly something we can do in this case. We just didn't want to. Get into a situation in which we have them all onsite and then come back and, and for the council to feel very strongly that we should be all fee in lieu of. Or, or that we should have looked at other alternatives, so. I, I feel comfortable that we can work with the developers and put together something that, that'll serve us well here. Just wanted to make sure that there was not strong consensus from three of you that, that one or two of those options is strongly preferred over another.
But I, I think they, they should have given us all the options. You know, if we, if you decide to go fee in lieu, that's what's going to happen. If you decide, like any option that they are comfortable to do. Maybe we will say, oh, we need fee in lieu and they don't agree to fee in lieu. Or maybe we'll say, okay, we need all of them offsite. Maybe they're gonna say they don't have another building on site, like they can. Give it, you know, all this kind of thing. I feel like I need to hear from them all the options that they can do, so we can choose from.
Okay, maybe they're prepared to help frame some of that discussion for you here today.
Okay, I, I, I really would love to know what the options and also I would love to know, like, how much the new cost for the public benefit that they're talking about. Lead, gold and silver and all this kind of, you know, environmental. I think that they're gonna do that will benefit the public. How much it was, is those things was there before? How much if they add, you think that's why they requiring the thirteen thousand? How much increase on that? I, I need details, numbers.
Kevin told us, there was like one and a half to two million was the difference in going up to the platinum from what they had had before.
They asking for four million and this is. Big difference.
Right, the other big difference that they had was, I think was a combination of that expanded Riverside space. And decreased revenue because of that expanded space.
And we as a city, are we required for the climate actions, do you look at silver or, or, or gold, or it doesn't matter?
I think that's probably our choice, but I think they were, from what Kevin said and what I'm hearing is that they looked at the platinum. Given that we had declared a climate crisis and trying to be as environmentally friendly as possible and, and energy wise as well.
The, the other thing I would also mention, you know, that's new to the conversation is the air quality inside the building, and so that. You know, that moving forward, I think is something that is much more significance and importance than it was before. So, you know, as, as, as a specific, and I don't know how that falls into our lead status, but, you know, hearing that. You know, I certainly, whether it's. The HVAC systems or having operable, operable windows, however we can improve the air quality. That, that I think is something that's of great importance moving forward.
I'll just clarify with our lead, I'm sorry, with our TIF policies. We do require lead silver or better with a, a designated number of points. Going towards the optimized energy performance credit, which is basically we're saying that you have to do a minimum of lead. And some of those points have, I'm sorry, have to do a minimum of lead silver, and some of those points have to go towards energy efficiency. That's the standard. That standard was developed in late twenty seventeen. And our, our position with this project has been that because of the council's declaration of a climate crisis, that we should be striving for. A higher standard. Certainly if the council were to, to think that in this case lead silver is sufficient. We could, we could drive down the, the cost of this proposal probably pretty significantly. But, you know, this is our, this is really our first opportunity post-declaration of that crisis. To partner with a private sector partner who's willing to, to really try to demonstrate the highest level of. Of sustainability for new construction, so I get it, it's very expensive and there's a cost benefit there that we all need to weigh. But to answer your question specifically. Lead silver is the, is what the policy requires.
Jeff, I might add to your, your words there. Lead silver is the base, but the eight energy points is really the more costly, which is above the silver level. Typically for a silver rated building, you wouldn't have eight energy points. We're actually achieving twelve energy points. Because what we found in our research to get eight points, we had to switch to. Probably the best mechanical system we could find on the market today, which is a VRF system. And we couldn't get eight points with any other system, so we had to actually go to the platinum level. Of energy HVAC systems. just to get the eight points required by TIF. The big benefit, of course, is that we are doing probably the best that we know how to do in today's world as far as energy with our system, which is pretty unusual for rental properties to have that high level of energy efficiency, which again fits very nicely with our climate action plan.
So, go ahead, Susan.
Well, let's go ahead, Brandon. That's fine.
I was just gonna kind of circle up all the comments since I finished and hope to clarify a few or maybe make more comfortable. It sounds to me like the four and a half million dollar increase, still have how did we get that high of an increase? So briefly, when we were there last August, you know, understand it's kind of a fine line. How much money do you spend before you, you know, you, you can guess and estimate and project costs? But until you really know, you have to spend money, you have to do the studies, you have to do the environmental reports. So from August to now, you know, we've spent significant amount, amounts of money on all these reports and environmental studies. And, you know, we've worked with Newman Monson on all these, we've sat in on multiple lead workshops trying to, you know, maximize the efficiency and the amount of points needed. And what we found, you know, back, back in August, when we were projecting lead platinum, we were working off of a projected cost of four to four and a half million in excess of your normal energy costs. And it turned out, you know, that number was actually closer to seven, seven and a half. So, you know, based on that original nine, it was just, it was three million dollars light of what we had anticipated it being, just being that we had never worked in that scope of a project. We were basing it off different projects. So how did it jump so high is just, you know, the, the actual cost when we've dug into the details has just gotten that much higher. You know, we were projecting the same level of environment or sustainability earlier. We were just under on the cost. And then the other main point, which Susan mentioned with Riverside, you know, just the quick calculations of, of losing an additional almost three thousand square feet of rentable commercial space. You know, you go from an average of thirty dollars a square foot in rent and they play, you know, they pay CAM expenses, they pay utilities, et cetera, and taxes to a nonprofit where we're getting on average about seven dollars a square foot. We're paying property taxes. They're not paying any CAM expenses. It's just a net rent number. So I think I mentioned earlier, it's about a twenty thousand dollar swing per month to our revenue in, in giving Riverside that additional space, which over the lifetime value of the project, you know, maps out to about four and a half million in lost value by not having that space rentable to a, to a commercial tenant. So we didn't, you know, put in that full gap because there's, there's other factors, but, you know, that was the other significant, you know, thing that increased those dollars. So, so that and the, and the extra cost of lead, I think is the easiest way to answer that question.
Thank you, Brandon. I guess, are, are there other questions that committee members have? And if so, I would, let's get those on the table. If not, I guess I would be interested to hear from the other committee members. Are you supportive or not of this kind of, you know, at least moving forward and getting more information in detail to come back to us?
Yeah, as I, I'm supportive of the project. I think the, you know, the this question of how we move forward on the affordable housing component certainly needs to be fleshed out so that we have a better idea of the cost benefits of onsite, offsite, fee in lieu. Which I, I do think with, with the affordable housing, it's also, as I, as I suggested, useful, I think, in, in terms of thinking about not just the affordable housing per se, but also questions relating to transportation and also neighborhood improvement, you know, how, what we do with our affordable housing and how that relates to the con, the neighborhood context, our other considerations. But overall, I think it, as I said, I think it's a good project that, I think it addresses a, a very broad range of public benefits. And will certainly be a, an improvement to the downtown.
Thank you, John. Maz, do you have any additional questions or comments about moving forward or not?
I guess, wanna know also, as John Thomas said, affordable housing be straight. And also, I wanna see if they can really do something about this thirteen million or have like, I wanna see less than that anyway.
Any other questions that you have about it? Or other than that, are you supportive of at least trying to move forward with it?
Yeah.
It's not a commitment, but just at least to, to get more information and try and nail down some of those things on the project.
Yes, but that's one of the thing that I want them to work on also. If they can bring the cost like written, like a little down desk and also clear plan for affordable housing and options.
All right. Do staff or tailwind members, do you have any, anything else that you, you know, would like us to try and address for you today? Does that help give you some direction of what we might want in the future?
Yeah, I, I think we have a, we have a good direction. It sounds to me like we should maybe dig into costs and differentiation between platinum and gold, which we had explored. But we were, we were pretty set or maybe, maybe we had a false, you know, idea of you guys being so set on wanting platinum or nothing. But we can certainly, I, I don't think it would take much to explore, you know, what that actual cost difference is and what you're losing and what you're getting. I think Kevin alluded to, I think you're losing a lot of your, your mechanical, which is your HVAC and your air quality stuff when you go from so platinum to gold, because that is the most costly items. A lot of the others may be similar. And, and then we do have the studies put together of different, you know, just how it affects our underwriting, the different financial options of, you know, having all of the affordable units onsite, having them all offsite, doing full in fee. And so I don't know what's best if we maybe just provide that to Wendy and Jeff and they can distribute as needed. So it can be looked at by council members.
That would be good.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, overall, I, you know, I think we're just, you know, thank you guys for listening today. We're really excited about moving the project forward. You know, just seeing the enthusiasm with some of our future tenants and, and some things, you know, we've already invested, you know, millions and millions into the project. So we've, we've come this far, you know, to, to slow down now. So we're really excited to, to keep it moving and, and hopefully be breaking ground sometime this fall. So we'll get the info needed to you guys and you know, hopefully start this process, that, that timeline laid out earlier. So.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
If I may jump in real quick, just to kind of make sure you're comfortable with staff actions going forward. We can, we can and will present you some of the affordable housing options that you've requested. We'll work with tailwinds and get that information for you. But in order to keep things moving forward, we'd like to go ahead and start the financial review with our consultant. And that can be, you know, we can, we can change that mid, mid process, depending on which affordable housing option that, that you all feel most comfortable with. But we can, we can get that process started. And then we can begin to work with the city attorney's office on the necessary urban renewal area amendments as well. Again, neither of those two things are, are commitments by the council to, to fund this project, but, but both take considerable amount of time to get through. So if we can get through those, work through the affordable housing issues, and if, if we're able to come to some negotiated agreement with tailwinds, then we'll be as ready as we can to present that to the EDC and then to the full council when that time comes. So I guess the question is, is council, or is this, is this group here, the EDC committee, comfortable with us starting that independent review? And comfortable with us initiating the urban renewal amendment process?
Yes, I am.
Is it like a voting thing? Are we voting?
No, I'm just looking for, I'm just looking for kind of a consensus amongst the group.
But this has now confused me. When the project come here, because this is the first time the project come here and it will be a present to the council for us and I'm new in this committee. I would like to know, are we voting to recommend it to the, to the council?
No.
No. All, all Jeff is asking is, do we basically want them to continue to gather information and take steps like getting that affordable housing option information that you wanted? Starting the, the financial review with the outside consultant that the city uses and having the city attorney's office start the urban renewal stuff, none of that is a commitment of the city council. And, and if, if we don't come up with certain things that we want on either the affordable housing options or if that financial review and the whole TIF package came back in a way, we have to review that here at EDC before we actually vote.
Okay. That's what I wanna hear. Yeah. Okay. It's still, we have to review it here before we can. Okay. Okay. Yeah. No problem. You can go ahead and do that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you will eventually vote on this project as a recommendation to the council. We're just not quite there yet.
Okay. I'm sorry. This is the first time.
Nope. That's fine. That's fine. Want to make everybody's comfortable and clear. So yes, you've got to go ahead to start moving through those steps. Obviously doing simultaneously will help with the, this timeline.
Definitely. Okay. Sound good to me.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. We will move on then to item number five. Consider a recommendation to the city council to proceed to establish the highway commercial tax abatement area. Wendy?
Sorry about that. I'm, I'm not sure why that's on our agenda. Actually, I'm, you caught me off guard. We were just gonna have this, this item on today.
Wondered too, because, but then I was reading the agenda.
I wonder if that.
You know what? No, I'm sorry. You know what? I was look, I was looking at the minutes of something else. I, I had flipped on to, I had a different pack.
Okay.
I was looking at that unit too. I said, where's that at?
My mistake. That was, that was totally my mistake. I had my, my packet and I had pulled up a different one that had the meeting minutes before. So.
Okay.
No, we move on to number four, which is staff time.
Yeah. Well, let me get over my heart attack first.
Sorry about that.
No, no, that's fine. I'm just joking. The only, the only thing I had really was that, of course, you all know that the urban renewal plan amendments are underway for the three industrial areas to enable the financial assistance with our industries to do energy improvement projects out there. So that process is moving along. We have the tax consultation this Friday with the school district and the county. And then on August fourth, we have the public hearing for that. And the only other thing I was going to report on is that we have just opened the window, so to speak, for submissions for businesses to apply for, I guess, the climate action awards, first time ever. It's an online application. Iowa City based businesses can apply in one of the five different categories that our climate action plan has in it. We'll be reviewing those at the end of July, early August, and then winners will be announced at the climate, at the virtual climate festival in September. So a new program and look for lots of involvement and really trying to help sort of herald and promote businesses who are doing good things and get more interest from other businesses to do the same.
Okay.
Good.
Anything from other staff? No. Committee time. Anything that committee members want to bring up?
No, nothing from me.
Nothing.
Nothing. All right. Any other business? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes three zero. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate your time and all the information and we look forward to getting more information. So have a great rest of your day.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye bye.